The United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
We have a quorum.
All right, let's do the board business, that kind of stuff, budgets. Anybody have a problem with the minutes?
I saw like four minor typos, type things, I'll just pass them on.
Yes.
Nothing substantial. So I've moved with my questions to the minutes.
One more second. Tom, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Anything interesting in the mail?
Let's see, the only thing of note was the selectmen will be doing their Class 1 and 2 license renewals, the auto sales license renewals, in December, and so if there are any particular sites that have site plan problems, we just let them, need to let them know.
Yes.
So I can pass. There's the memo and I'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Sure. And there was Communication Board Conflict of Interest seminar you sent out.
Oh, yeah, on Wednesday, the 13th, January, set up a conflict of interest seminar.
Which is great, there's since there's so many new boards, well, there are the advisory boards, that are not speeding a lot of these things.
It was 6:00 to 8:30, right?
A 6:30 start.
Six, oh, 6:30, so.
That was Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 13th.
Thirteen.
Yeah, that's what I wrote down. We have to, we have to take that conflict of interest.
Right.
Sorry.
We have to take that conflict of interest exam every two years.
This is the list.
Yeah, it's good for anyone in town to see it, to experience it.
I gave you the FY15 budget information that has been submitted to the accounting department. So if you have any comments or questions, the budget meeting will be November 16th, I think the planning board is on at 2:00 P.M.
Yes.
And so I'll be there for that. If anybody else wants to come, you're more than welcome.
Yeah, no, step, I shouldn't have supplied.
So do they want to answer back to this memo? I mean, these are all existing, the only one I have any questions is the guy in Holland Lab, what's he, a small old distorts guy?
Right, and he's had license continuing for a lot of years.
Yeah, he, he's been in here, and, yeah.
Yeah, I haven't. Does the board have any question, or problem with the Class 2s?
How can Toyota have a Class 1 and a Class 2? What's the Class 2 for?
For, I believe it's used auto sales is 2.
Okay.
Yeah, just going back to budget, that's the one thing I didn't read in the packet, because I realized we put it together, I've got comments, yeah, I could reach out otherwise. Anything noteworthy about it, given that guy haven't looked bad, and maybe other people haven't either?
Okay, the finance committee asked for two budgets, one is level staffing, and the second, I thought of it as a reach budget.
Mission budget.
Mission budget, yes. What could be added to reach a new mission statement. I left both level funded, the only increase was just the regular payroll increase that would happen next July 1st, and $300 more in expenses to cover additional training classes, because I'd heard from several of you, there were some courses that you wanted that weren't fitting in the current budget.
This is our reaching out, our big budget, $300 more.
What about the guy on Adams Street? How come he's not on here?
Oh.
Apparently he has not applied to the Selectment for a...
Doesn't he need to have it renewed?
I don't know if he does auto sales.
Oh.
That's Lou Caracci, Lyons, is that the name of it?
No, that's the one on, the one on Adams Street, the one behind the old drugstore.
Jake's Auto Body.
Jake's, yeah.
Yeah, if he does, he's not selling cars, he doesn't need the Class 2.
No, he's, yeah.
This, this looks fine.
This is all everybody knows.
Yeah, that's kind of a holdover from old days, when sometimes the selectmen would issue or reissue the licenses with, and the planning board had some problems with a couple of the site plans.
Right.
I think we've cleared up the few that we had issues with before, so it's good to get the information.
So Chestnut's not coming in?
Right, but I can give you a quick update. The owners of lots 4 and 5 had cleared much more of the site than you approved under the special permit. They did hire Jude Govan to engineer a solution, he's getting paid, and he's got wattles going out, the straw wattles, to control the runoff. And he should get those started, he thought they would start tomorrow installing those, and then for the next meeting, he can have plans for you for a long-term solution.
We want palm trees.
Did they explain why they cleared more lot than they were supposed to?
They haven't provided any, any other information.
Yeah, and they did complete, which is, I assume, the photos, the bottom of Rowland's.
Have they, have they given a commitment not to, not to do any more clearing without?
Well, what they got was the letter, that enforcement letter from Rowland.
Anyway, all right, so, anything else, any other business?
Aaron, do we, in our budget, do we have legal, or does that come under town?
That comes under town.
Okay.
Mind anticipating any problems? We need to put some more money in the legal fund, legal kidding?
No, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how much we've saved over the past five years.
I don't think we've saved too much. I think we're budgeting at 200 grand a year, that's legal, to the town is.
Sounds about right.
Yeah, I think so, we use much lately, we've actually been pretty, two nights, you guys are a bunch, never mind. I digress. All right, so we have a meeting scheduled for the 21st, and what after that? And what are we going for December? I try to shoot at just one in December?
That's up to you.
Okay, it's one.
That was an easier solution.
I had them penciled in for the 5th and the 19th, but if you wanted to just do the...
Well, don't you guys take one, it's plenty for the holiday season, you know? I don't think we do the 19th.
Just do the 12th?
12th in the middle, sure.
I don't care.
12th.
But then we have the Sanderson, we have to, the deadline's on the 7th on that, for the preliminary. So don't we have to accommodate that?
It's just, we're gonna have a meeting on the 21st, we'll probably have a better idea by then anyway. The 7th is a Saturday, I forgot, isn't it Saturday?
By what's a day count?
Well, yeah, right, but you'd have to have a...
I'm not meeting three weeks in a row, not for the Sanderson, I'm sorry.
No, that's not three weeks in a row, that's...
This one?
Thanksgiving Day.
We're gonna meet the 7th, December 5th?
There's a date, let's see, the 21st, 5th, 19th.
One of them, for right now, see what how we do with them.
Would it be, why don't we do this, why don't we reserve the 5th, the 12th, and the 19th, and then we'll either have two meetings in December, or we'll have one on the 12th, depending on what the, what the load is.
Right.
Are you, are both you guys available those, those three days, should we need to go?
I may not be around the 5th.
Okay.
That's the only problem, trying, yeah, maybe I am.
Yeah, let's reserve it for now.
All right. Okay. So, yeah, so I guess Jerry's not coming either. So that feeds, well...
Not a problem for the scenic road.
No, it's not a problem.
It's a problem for any gear road.
Well...
The scenic road is not zoning public area.
No. All right, why don't we start with the scenic road, so we get things out here as quick as you'd like.
Got Sanderson on at 8:30, yeah.
You've gotta yell at Martha for not bunching them together like she does with lawyers. She has to be saying...
Okay. I'm presuming it goes well.
All right, so we have a public hearing, scenic republic, scenic road. Crane Road, someone want to give us?
I just gave the hearing notice to...
All right, you want to read it first? We have a reading, yes. 7:45. Public hearing, Pathenic Road Special Permit, 36th Crane Road. The Town of Littleton Planning Board and Tree Warden will hold a joint public hearing on Thursday, November 7th, 2013, at 7:45 P.M. in Room 103 Town Hall, 37 Shattuck Street, to consider the application for a special permit pursuant to Master Plan Law, Chapter 40, Section 15(c) and the Code of the Town of Littleton, Scenic Road Bylaw, Chapter 143. Property location is 36th Crane Road, Camp R 09, Partial 6F. The applicant, G.S. Holdings, is seeking a special permit under the Scenic Road Bylaw to allow the removal of up to 20 feet of stone wall to allow a new driveway, no public street trees would be impacted. Application and plans can be viewed at the Planning Board and Town Clerk's office during their regular business hours. Any person interested in wishing to be heard on the proposal plan, on the proposed plan, should appear at time and place designated, Richard Crowley clerk.
Okay.
Let the games begin.
Okay. So does the applicant want to tell us what his plans are?
I've planned to build a single-family home with a driveway that's approximately 200 feet long with, and the, the walling will be approximately 2,500 square feet. And with the, with the stone wall, what I was going to do was remove the approximately 20 feet, and then turn it in towards the street.
Okay.
And that's pretty much what I was going to do.
Crane Road, where's Crane Road?
Up on the public.
And it goes up to continuation Taylor.
Taylor Street.
Yeah, excellent.
And there were photos in your packets that showed this street and the location of the driveway.
You're not taking out any trees, per se?
Not town trees.
Town trees?
Private trees that are on the line.
Correct.
Yeah. It actually looks like pretty minimal impact. I mean, looking at the plans, it looks like it's engineered very tightly.
It is.
And there's no other place for that really to go.
Right.
The three-well radii, start taking up a lot of room, the septic system, the wetland buffer, there's like only one place left for that driveway.
Correct.
And it's minimal impact.
Correct.
Yeah, and the photos are great, nice.
Jimmy, do you have any issues with this?
Yeah, I was just curious, the first time I've been able to see it was actually this evening, around 5:00, so it's sort of dark. It looks like it drops off more off the road than...
It does.
It shows on the plan. Is that because there's fill that's there, maybe for the septic system, but as you come off the road?
Well, once the septic system goes in, it'll be a pretty level surface from, from the home to the street. And that's pretty much how the lay of the land is.
Yeah, I mean, it seems nicely designed.
It is.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Trying to find it on Google here. The, it looks, looks fine to me.
All right, I want to do mostly the move of the front feet, with the ends being turned back into the driveway, that's the...
So moved?
Aye. Are you good in R?
I'm good. The questions aren't weak, are they?
I think I've got them.
Yeah, turn the, turn the rocks in, like we asked for, it doesn't look like it's much of a...
There's hardly any rocks there, anyway.
Right, and they're all below grade at this point, so once we're done, we'll oversee it.
That's great.
Thank you.
Good luck in the house.
Why? And you said Howard Avenue's not coming in?
Mr. Shaw promised that he would have an A&R ready before I post the agenda next time.
Okay.
Rumor has it it's coming in tomorrow.
Lovely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is this the one with, is that the one with the tree issue? That lot, Howard Avenue lot?
Yeah.
Where he cleared out the whole lot, and the next lot?
He was having issues with conservation on that.
Yeah, well, he cleared out both lots. And you guys didn't have an A&R yet for it?
No.
Okay.
Do landscaping.
So that was landscaping.
So nothing zoning, but says you can't do it.
Has he owned it?
Yeah.
He doesn't have an A&R.
He's, he has one parcel that he's providing in December.
Okay, all right. Sure he's the owner of the record? I know, it's not your problem, I know, I know. I'm just throwing in.
Well, he's sort of guessing what might be there.
Pretending I know what I'm, yeah. Yeah, that's an area, we need, we need to have Conservation Street number, and that's taken care of.
I think he's on the 18th, the next year.
What else? I don't know, so far ahead of us, does anyone want to sing to the audience out there, or? Who else?
All these are fixed time, right?
Yep. Unfortunately.
Were you at...
We can't really begin until, the next thing, until 8:00.
We can't, we have to...
8:15.
Things are posted.
8:15?
We have to...
Because Howard Avenue's not going to be here.
So she would shut TV off?
How to entertain us?
We should shut TV off, so they know.
Hey Mike, do you hear that?
What?
They need some entertainment.
Well, you and I can fight, that would be entertaining. Richard, did, you know, did you go to town meeting?
No, I wasn't able to do that, but I was glad to see our proposal did pass, I think there is a...
Where is Howard?
Mentioned to Richard, if it had been the expanded article, it would have gone down.
Yeah.
It's all good.
Oh, you said Harwood.
Yeah, I mean, since having a...
I know, he's asked a lot, talking about it.
My guess is you're all here for Sanderson Road, just a guess.
Yeah.
8:30.
8:30, wow, what do you guys get so early for?
Because the notice that Jeff sent out didn't have the time on it.
Ah, captive audience, huh?
Aaron and I talked a week or two ago about some of the old subdivision, one of them being a grape farm, just curious if something to check with and see what's going on.
You mean about pavement up there?
Well, they started paving it in 1996.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's about 10, 15 years now.
So where are the bonded lines?
They're still bonded, they're still bonded, right? At least, yeah.
They are, I mean, I don't know what the number is, but then David conserved a grease, and now have a double concuss for a lot.
How many lots are yet to be developed?
Well, all the lots were released, and so he's been paying full buildability taxes on all of the lots.
So we're way ahead of writing, right there we are.
But it's not in the bond.
I know, but he, he's still at the end of the day, has to turn that road over to us, and we can deny it when he goes.
I think he has a fair amount of money in there, but, you know, when you're looking at a full road, and it's, that's what I'm saying, you know, find out what...
We're getting interest on it too, right?
Well, he is.
No, he's not, we're holding the bond, it's all in, I don't think he has the interest.
Yeah, but given interest rates, I'm sure that's not kept up with construction costs.
But it's from '96, the compounding of money, if you set it aside, and you don't touch it, in seven years, it should double. Putting the money, so it's probably double what we think. Why don't we just find out what it is?
Yeah.
Take the guesswork out of it.
Yeah, I was curious, how many lots have been built out yet? How many?
I'm gonna say there's gonna be 20 or 25 of them, maybe not that many.
And how many have been built so far?
Was it 64 lots?
I think 48 or 60, I have.
Well, how bad's the, have you been, you been down there, how bad's the road?
It's the base course, been done in two phases, the first part was done in 1996.
There's not even a finished course on it yet?
Oh, no.
But he's still removing gravel from the house blocks. I mean, it's just...
Yeah, but you know what, that does bring up another point, the people that live on that road are entitled to finish, finish road, just because Roddy takes his sweet time.
I mean, he does do maintenance, plumbing, and...
Yeah, I know he does, but, but, you know, who wants to live on a road that's binder and cracks, and, I mean, how, what kind of shape, how bad is that? I mean, binder, I mean, I can do this 15-year-old, binder, 16, 17-year-old binder is not, it's not that long.
You say paid it last 20 years.
Binder, some last 20 years, I don't care.
That's what I mean, so you're three quarters of the way through its useful life, and it's not...
It's not even paid, though.
Again, I'm just saying...
Yeah, it does bring up a good point.
If you're, if you have enough money to do the top coat, what do you have if you have to reclaim and create a payment?
Why don't, yeah, why don't we send, why don't we find out how much money we have? Get an estimate of what it's gonna cost to fix it, and then remind Mr. Palmer that he has 17-year-old binder out there, not even pavement, what his long-term intentions are, because we're getting, depending on how much it is, that there may not be enough money in the bond to finish it, what, what's his ultimate intentions. And if you'd like to come to talk to us, since you've got so many stupid meetings in November in December.
You gotta fill them up.
Since we get paid by admission.
I mean, we could just to get...
You know, you're absolutely right, I, I totally forgot that, it's not, it's all in, still in binder.
Close to it.
Yeah, yeah, didn't he do the first, like, seven houses, a fantasy, then it, then it dumped stuff?
Because he had the finish, doesn't even go that far, it's the first, like, four. I have like the...
It's a good point. Yeah, whoever thought, I mean, it's actually nice that he's taken so long to build them, so it's never been a big push, but...
Well, the thing is, we had a good discussion here and I, many years ago, and he is paying the full taxes, you know, he makes a good argument, but I think we have to, I mean, he doesn't want to build so fast, you know, he says, you build a lot, you're not gonna have to school.
Well, I think it's, I think he's benefited from the economic upturn more than just paying the taxes, you know?
He does, I mean, I think, but he's comfortable at the pace that they're going.
Yeah. Yeah, I think he's laughing all over the bag, I mean, that's, that's his prerogative as a developer. Maybe I think it's something else, and I totally forgot it.
It's not been out of a big rush, but you have Distribution Center 2, which is completed, they have a punch, just, they keep their own, the rest of those industrials.
Right. Can we talk real quick, without going into too many details, about Reed Mall? You sent them as a follow-up, because they wanted to come tonight, the ASBelt.
Right, the requirements for the ASBelt.
Okay. You haven't seen it yet, have you? How much are we holding for them?
The bond amount was just over $50,000. So as soon as the ASBelt gets in, I'll send it to Highway, Police, Fire, Light and Water, and get there and put on it. If anybody needs to check the site, you can do that, we put them in.
He's, he's pretty much done everything he's supposed to.
Yeah. I still have the 15.
So you have to stump, how much more?
Burning on 15 minutes. Guys get up, go get, have a coffee, we've got like 15 minutes.
That's the best we can ad lib? Go get a bottle, come on!
You've been doing this for how long?
Well, we've never been on television, it's like, it's a pain in the ass being on, being on television.
Have a drink, what you got?
No, not us, just Coke and Diet Coke back there, that's all we can offer you.
So what other things do we have, and what about the master plan, something in your future we need to think about?
What about the, why don't we talk about the...
Budget, yeah, thank you.
You put money in the...
I didn't notice you have $100,000 for the master.
For the master plan.
Right.
Probably won't happen, but still.
The selectmen had added that, starting to update the master plan as one of their goals, Keith had asked that $100,000 be added to the budget, just as a placeholder, and start the discussion on when even when to update the master plan.
All right, the other thing we need to talk to, and now the town meeting's over, is we need to start talking about the medical marijuana side together, we should start thinking about getting together and drafting a bylaw where we want to, how we want to do it.
And did you see that in Framingham, actually, they did have a bylaw, it got rejected, and once it got rejected, they opened up it for people to grow their own.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
How did, how did that happen? That they controlled it?
The bylaw, well, it went to the state's regulations, which hadn't been able to hold it back. So even though they tried to promote a bylaw, it seemed reasonable, it did not pass town meeting.
Oh.
So that removed that barrier, and they didn't have a moratorium.
But I didn't think, you're talking, people can't grow their own stuff, any...
Yeah, actually, I, I think that, well, for medicinal reasons, you know, people borrow...
They are allowed to?
Yeah, allowed, they're enabled to, as long as they have a medical reason, someone verifying it.
That's right, yeah.
You know, Framingham actually has two moratoriums, no, Framenatic, and, because I think they looked at the cultivation, and also the actual dispensing of it. But, you know, there's, there's a message there, though, if the bylaw doesn't pass, and that gets removed.
Okay, well, yeah, we have until July for that, I believe.
Right, that's gonna take some work, and there'll be lessons we can learn from other folks.
Right, which is a good reason to wait till now, or a little further from...
Well, I'm not saying today, I think we need to start talking to the selectmen, maybe after the first of the year to get going for something annual town meeting.
Right, I know town administrator and town council have been gathering the information from the other towns, and seeing what kind of records they have with, with what's passing and what's not. There's a conference that town administrator's going to next week, I think, next Thursday, that some of the towns are gonna share what they have going on, and so he'll bring that information back.
Well, we have to, we have to ask the condescendents whether it's something we want to promote or we don't want to promote.
Right, but if you get too restrictive, the AG's not going to approve the bylaw, and that opens the town back up again completely.
Okay.
Now, I was surprised that the last interest party wasn't even aware we had a moratorium in place, and that was the thing that convinced them to hold their, their interest. I mean, is it odd that people come in and declare they want to do something here, but not be informed as to whether there's a moratorium in place or not? And do you know how that's working, or, I mean, that just seemed very strange.
Don, are you talking about the one that was gonna go over at the, by the train station?
Right, a rock.
There've been three, actually, there've been three in... Actually, there've been three inquiries so far. And the third one didn't have a, didn't share a location with us. The first one was Napoli and he was Cup and.
Both Cup locations, by Okmeto.
And the second one was at two sixty-five Foster Street. The third one just called town administrator and did not share a location other than an industrial site.
Right, so they may still be there. I mean, they can be in the wings and, you know, thirty-five are designated for Millsex County, if I remember correctly.
Thirty-five for the state the first year, and then every year after that, there'll be several more. So it's not gonna issue that's gonna go away.
I, I thought it was per county, though.
No more than, I, I'm not sure the details.
So there, there is this one group, sorry, in the wings and they're waiting, but.
But the applications are due to DPH by early January. And Lilton's moratorium goes through the end of June, so that doesn't match. They're looking for the moratorium to be lifted and for letters of support from the town by January.
Right, but in the case of the first one, Napoli, expressed interest in two locations, people sort of scrambled, looked at. And then there was some sort of screening by DPH, and he didn't make that. And I think that's the reason why he got pulled, so.
No, he did make it to the second round.
Oh, okay. I think from my read, it all sounded, sounded like he did not, but maybe that's just the reporting.
Well, that's why.
Yeah. But it seems like there's an application and then there's a screening, so as soon as one applies and there's screening on a rolling basis, it sounds like.
No, then they're allowed to go to this, no, there was mass, the mass screening. Only a few fell out of the first phase that the DPH screened out. And all of those are allowed to apply for the phase two, and that's the one that's due in January. And that's when they were supposed to have location specific for dispensary and cultivation site.
This is, this is the beginning.
Yeah.
So we may win that, when we draft, whatever we draft. It's gotta be careful not to, you know, you can't exclude, but you can, you can control where it goes.
Right.
So we have to be very careful on how we word that.
So at one point you were talking about sort of rough schedules to what we're doing and, you know, we brought the medical marijuana bylaw we'd look at beginning of the first of the year. Were the other things that you had mentioned is sort of how you're sort of pacing?
I would be looking to bring in the sign by law into place in the spring.
Our role there is very, very minimal.
Right, we're shooting for the spring town meeting.
Yeah, right.
And we'll just back out the dates for, you know, do a.
Joint meeting with the selectmen and pick the dates for it. And like, it'd be best to have something that, something that's workable from another town that's already been passed.
For the medical marijuana.
Right, and throw it up to read and wheel that one.
Right. So you mentioned signed by law, which is, we just have a normal role in, because the bylaw sub is.
Pretty much.
I mean, we're just eliminating it from zoning.
That's right. Our, our job would be to eliminate the bylaw from zoning, because the new bylaw will be a general bylaw, regulated by the selectmen.
Well, you are, I can see you on TV.
So are there other major things that we should be thinking of?
Is it an eight fifteen somewhere? I know, Jim, huh?
Yeah, he, he's thrilled with this.
So the next, that's how it works. You gotta wait till the time is, is there.
So for master planning, when, when are we likely to be able to get into that? Figuring we have some dead time, I might as well use it productively.
I have heard, I haven't heard any suggestions on where, where you start or how you go. I think that's probably a joint discussion with the selectmen.
And the last time we went through the master planning, it got dragged out quite a bit, and it's actually the same vendor that Groton had. And Groton had the same experience. What they did is they eventually picked up the price themselves and moved it ahead. Be nice to try and avoid that this time around, even though there are good people that were doing it, they just got dragged out.
Well, it's also not as old as it was now. We're dealing with a product that's only what, eleven, twelve years old now?
Well, that's time for.
It hasn't changed that.
Right, but it's better than the nineteen fifty-six that we had been dealing with.
Right.
The initial process, last time, the goals and objectives process, I think was probably much better than the master planning.
Right.
The meat of the master planning process. We tried to do it for thirty-five thousand dollars, the whole thing, and we got a report that sits on the shelf that doesn't reflect much of anything other than a lot of board up late.
But I was sort of surprised that Groton had similar experiences as we did, and they found other sources of money and just went ahead and finished it off. I guess I was saying, oh, be careful selecting the vendor.
And not trying to shortchange the amount that you really need to spend.
It's gonna cost money. It will cost one way or another. I might as well spend it on the planning and get a good product.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, in the next six minutes.
How do we make out with the gravel removal permit? Did we leave it at, no?
Let's see, town council weighed in that the point did not need a gravel removal permit, because they had already gone through the site plan and special permits and the subdivision. And on top of that, they had building permits already, so it was not.
That's enough with you?
That was enough for, everything had been covered that needed to be.
You know, you brought up a good point while in the middle of town meeting, you texted me about the fireworks. Maybe you should make the three hundred committee aware that Mr. Parker's generously donated to do something for the three hundred, including setting off fireworks. So that maybe they're aware that they may not know that he had said they were gonna do that. So making them aware of that. Three tonight?
That's it.
You're not making me happy.
You break your mask and switch it. Only so much each of us can do. Yeah, we certainly can discuss the issues and.
We really can't like it, but just.
Okay. Get informational session, I guess. I just see people sit there, you know?
Got a antenna blow up like this for help?
Yeah. So the real question is Jerry gonna make it? We know for sure Peter can't make it.
I guess Jerry will. I didn't hear him.
I didn't hear.
What?
Call. It doesn't, well, it's all late now. If he's not here by eight-thirty, he's not coming. Maybe got tied up trying to fly home from Washington, we'd see a lot, so maybe. Got tied up trying to fly home. Oh, thank you. Now, I guess I can start it this way. We got a couple minutes. Just two different sides to this, right? There's MMC and there's the.
Sanders.
No, 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 no. I'm talking, we're, which one am I?
Millsex.
Yeah, Mill, Millsex. Uh, there's Middlesex and there's.
Right, Millsex.
And the people who are going to be running the batch plant, correct?
I haven't clarified.
So why do we have so many lawyers here? Yeah, well.
If you're gonna reopen the bill.
Yeah, I know. I think it might be better procedurally to. Wait till it doesn't matter. I just wanted to.
Sure.
Fourth, and if you don't, then.
Okay, you could try.
Well, no, still. We'll have to read it anyway, right?
No, it says continue.
We might as well continue, that's right. I believe you need four out of five, special permit. We do have the bylaw that says they can view this and bring them up to speed so that they can vote it the next time. So you can still, if you still wanna go forward, you can still do that. You'd rather wait till the round. I mean, if we can't have a vote tonight, we might as well have one. Hold on, hold on. And I don't know, we knew Peter wasn't gonna be here, but we thought Jerry was gonna be here.
The next meeting is the twenty, twenty-first, I think.
Right.
Is that all right? If you can, if that's the next meeting, that's the next meeting.
Yeah.
Jerry's on his way.
He is on his way.
So he'll be here in about ten minutes.
He did. He might be a little late. It's all right. Maybe what we'll do is we'll do, we'll flip-flop it up at the eight-thirty, then do. Take care of yours. Well, now we have to wait till we get there.
I don't actually.
You what?
Did I miss something?
But he's on his way.
Jerry's on his way.
I'll dial him on his way, let's see. I guess we might as well read this.
And there was a kind of rather lengthy draft decision that we had been working on.
Oh, it looks good. I had just a few edits.
And then that's why I give you drafts, so feel free to edit.
It's quite an interesting letter from aggregate.
So are you planning, are you switching the, the two agenda items?
Um, we'll wait to see how quick Jerry gets here. If he gets here, um, before eight-thirty, we'll start. We'll just push that one back a little bit. If he doesn't get it, we'll, we'll continue with the eight-thirty.
Pretty good. Was it a whole lot better?
Uh, usually about a half hour.
Yeah, it's way better.
I don't miss the train at all.
Miss the people on the train.
Oh, yeah. Probably another year.
Well, actually, that is a good thing.
Do we want these people to sign us?
No, sir, there is a, do me a favor, sir.
Yeah.
The signing sheet right there, can you pass it around?
Sure.
It should've been anybody signed as they came out of the court. No time.
The new way.
Well, it's, uh, it's not so easy, but you know, you gotta fight your way, you just pick a quarter.
Where are you working with?
Uh, over by Hartwell Avenue. It's real. It's not that bad. Our wife's mom. How would Jeff out? I don't know. I couldn't remember his name then, but now I can. I think I bumped into him on an elevator, like, on my last day, so, and I was like, oh, you're Jeff.
Yeah, that's where they go.
Yeah, that's where they go. Open one. Thank you.
No plans?
Oh, does it look the same one that we have?
Still, still walking through it.
Save the tree. Okay, whoever gets here first.
How's the house?
Good.
How's the house?
Good. Leaving Thursday, go down there. Just a little bit of work, just a little bit. So then I come back, actually, that's gonna come back Thursday, so that's good. Yeah, I will be here for the twenty-first, so my thing. I'll be here, I'm leaving on Thursday. I'm leaving, yeah, that's really good, back for the twenty-first, so I'll have to be back Thursday, like, little Thursday to Thursday. We have a meeting on the twenty-first, right?
Well, if it's not, exactly, it's the twenty-eighth, just kidding.
I know, I wanted to stay till Friday or Saturday, but we don't. We'll see. Okay, so we're in the right order, we're standing in that now.
Hey, Jerry.
Hi there, how are ya?
Oh, good to see ya.
I have no idea.
Apologies. Okay. Done?
We've got it done now.
What's done? He's... Stays till...
Aaron, send the constables after dawn, please.
Don't you have a coin? We need four for a special permit. Major industrial special permit. That's the aggregate indices, that's what they have for. Continue with you.
So... That is why.
Okay, we have an eight-fifteen, continued public hearing, Eighty Year Road, major industrial use special permit. Would someone like to ramp it up to speed?
From the Lord Alex Pira for the TMC leasing, from Mr. Bill Bowerdahl. And Jesse Johnson from... Um, you recall that at the last hearing, it continued to the day for the purpose of drafting a decision for your consideration. Um, as part of that process, a number of drafts went back and forth. Town council was copied on those drafts. As part of the process, Jesse has made a few changes to the plan, giving some notes, um, which I think Jesse can run through for you. After that, the only other event is today at one-thirty-seven. Um, in the afternoon, Moran was emailed a letter from Robinson and Culp. I was not copied on it, I borrowed it from Moran at five o'clock tonight. Um, but I prepared to address that after Jesse runs the plan.
I can be brief, as a result, as was mentioned, to try to get to a potential decision for tonight. We further defined and outlined an existing limit of the stone and gravel that's on site. And that was to define an area that is potential for outdoor storage. Currently, they have storage throughout paved areas, but also some of the hard-packed gravelled areas. So I wanted to show those on the plan, and then I also added a note, which I piloted here, it's the last note on, you'll see on the plan. It says, "Outdoor storage of materials shall be within existing pavement and gravel limits," as we showed here on the plan.
As well, within the brown.
Right, exactly. So that's...
Where are the trucks going to park now that... There's all that equipment out there now, is there room to put, um, the concrete mixing trucks on the side as well?
There is additional room, you know, they're not, they're not at capacity for space out there right now, so there still is room to take in more equipment.
Okay, so who owns, who owns what out there? Who owns the big building up front?
Like I just said, TMC leasing, the applicant in front of you owns the entire site.
Okay.
Including the garage building and the concrete plant and the hoppet building associated with concrete. The entire site is owned by TMC. Presume your question arises out of a letter that you received a day from Robinson and Culp. So, let me put that, the letter in context for you. Aggreg Industries, as a successor, was a tenant of the concrete plant. And as you know, it was operated up until two thousand and eight. I don't want to drag you into the dispute between TMC and Aggreg. Suffice it to say that TMC terminated the lease in the fall of two thousand and eleven. And there is an ongoing dispute between Aggreg and TMC about that termination. So I don't want to...
So Aggreg has no rental over there right now?
Yeah. So, as you know, we applied for the special permit, um, back in September. Aggreg owns the facility across the street, so they were notified as part of the normal proceedings in front of you on October fourth. It was certified notice. They didn't seek to participate in these proceedings then. On October seventeen, you opened the public hearing, we had a full discussion of all of the issues. Aggreg had their counsel here. He didn't seek to participate in the proceeding, said nothing. As you know, we went through the process, we had the discussion. Meeting was continued to tonight, to give an opportunity to draft conditions, draft the decision. I think if you read the draft decision, it's going back and forth, it was copied to town council. That fully reflects the discussion that we had. In the three weeks since the last hearing, Aggreg has not sought to give you any input on the decision. And I'll tell you what they did do, instead of trying to give you input on the decision, they went to the arbitrator in the dispute over the lease and sought to enjoin those proceedings. And I want to give you a copy of the arbitrator's decision on that injunction, because I think it's very instructive about what's, you know, happening here.
And does arbitrator make a final decision as to the dispute?
Arbitrator has made a decision as to the injunction that they requested, and that's the decision that you have in front of you. The arbitration is ongoing, set to resume, uh, on Tuesday. So there will be additional testimony in the proceeding.
You won't, too?
You won't? Moran, I'm...
For the... Thank you.
So the arbitrator said, uh, he turned this injunction down?
Yes, he turned the injunction down, but he made a number of findings and decisions, I think, are instructive for you here. He says that TMC and Aggreg disagree as to whether such a special permit, you know, it's a proceeding in progress, is necessary. Aggreg asserts that it is entitled to resume concrete manufacturing at the site under the lease between the parties, and that no new permission from the town of Littleton is required. Now, you remember, this hasn't been operating for almost six years. Uh, TMC contends that the right to resume was lost after Aggreg shut down the operation in two thousand and eight, and therefore, the new permit is needed. The arbitrator recognizes that it will be the Littleton Planning Board, you know, and not the arbitrator that will make the decision as to whether the special permit is implied. So, yesterday, this hearing was yesterday. Yesterday, Aggreg took the position, we don't need a permit. In the letter today, we need the permit, but we don't like the findings. It's an inconsistent position. Littleton Planning Board held up the hearing on October seventeen, footnote counsel for Aggreg was present at the hearing, did not participate. You know that. Following the hearing, the planning board drafted a decision scheduled November seventh as the date for any further hearing on the application and the issuance of the decision. Aggreg expresses the fear that the permit may be denied or that conditions may be added that would inhibit Aggreg's action. Now, those were the fears they told the arbitrator. They're not telling you that tonight, they're telling you something completely different. They don't, they agree, the permit is required, they just don't like the findings in the decision.
All right.
It, it, it goes on in that vein. I would just say to you, I deeply resent not being given a copy of the letter that was forwarded to the planning board at one-thirty-seven. I deeply resent the statement in the letter that TMC has misrepresented anything to you. We have done nothing but be absolutely truthful to this board. I greatly resent the implication. So, you know, nobody's playing, on TMC, nobody's playing lawyer games here. We came before you because we believe that permit is necessary to resume the operation. We had that discussion at the meeting, in that town council was here, we agreed, we went through the process. Town council has received copies of the decision, the draft decisions along the way. There have been no suggestions or changes from town council as to the decision. So what does Aggreg not like about the decision today? They say, it's not true, but they say, we don't want in there a statement that the concrete plant has to be replaced. Well, the decision doesn't say that. It says the applicant, TMC, expects to replace the plant. Well, first statement is simply not...
All right, could I just stop you for a second, Moran? We have a draft decision, town council has gone over and they're, they're okay with it, correct?
Um, town council didn't offer any changes. Um, I did talk to Chris after he spoke with Greg Sampson. Chris would be available to come to the next meeting if he wanted, he wasn't available tonight.
Well, that's kind of what I'm, I'm kind of thinking. Unfortunately, we enlightened at the twelfth hour. I think we still, I don't think we've changed our decision as we led you, that's the way we're going. We have a draft decision before us. Given the fact that an arbitrator has all of a sudden popped into it, I think I would, and I'm only speaking for myself right now, I'll poll the rest of the board. I think we'd like town council to take some time to go over the decision and kick back to us. I, we're still looking at finalizing everything as we're going. You've given us a rough draft, it's gone back and forth, it seems like we're all set to go, but having seen this at the twelfth hour...
Well, may I just say, I mean, this is very unfair to the applicant. We filed the application in September, they have had a great deal of time to put input into the decision. On the very last day, after the arbitrator denies them their request to enjoin the proceedings, to suddenly sending a letter to you and, and cause this process to be longer. I think that is very unfair to the applicant, with most respect for him.
Let me ask the board.
Why do you...
I, I, I think, as you represent, it seems last minute, I mean, I should have participated. And it seems unfair, but technically, I think it's probably allowed. I think, my, my personal feeling is that, yeah, you've worked together, we pulled this, together this draft. Still sounds like a very viable draft, but it puts you on much firmer ground. The town council looks at it, everyone feels really comfortable with it. I, I don't see it as high risk, but I would be curious as to your take as to what risk you may see for this.
I agree, I don't think it's high risk, I think we're all on the same page as far as a new special permit being needed, the plant being upgraded, it's sixty-year-old technology like we talked about, there's gonna have to be monitoring wells and all of that kind of stuff. I just think that since an arbitrator's involved...
The arbitrator has nothing to do with us. We're here, we have a, we have an applicant who needs a special permit because he exceeds the number of square footage. And, and, and that's it, he owns the property. His arbitrator is, that arbitrage between him and some other, other company, has nothing to do with us.
But there's something in play.
No.
And he has to understand what they say.
Yeah, but... Simple.
I just want to understand more, um, so you, you want to make concrete there? Correct. Does Aggreg want to make concrete there?
Goes back to that.
No, because their, their, their letter states that they leased the land, and that includes the plant.
the plant.
That's part of their claim.
It is part of their claim that the termination of the lease is somehow knocked down. They, all I can tell you about their intention to operate the plant is that they stopped operating it in 2008. There has been testimony as to whether they would have operated it. I'm not going to drag you into the details, but, but the arbitrator, this is a private dispute between Aggregate and TMC. The arbitrator, in his decision with respect to the injunction, has effectively said, in fact, not effectively, he made it explicit, the decision with respect to the special permit is yours to make.
Okay, but I, my first question is, do they, does, I do know Aggregate Industries intends to make concrete there.
I do, my personal belief is that they do not.
You do not know that?
I'm assuming that gentleman standing up behind you might be able to answer that question.
But the, the.
Wait, let's.
I would like to ask another question, if I could. The, to me, this seems like nothing more than a dispute between a landlord and a tenant. And we should not be a part of that dispute, whether you rented it to the other company or not.
Are you, that's a question or a statement?
It's a question.
Right, and it, to me, until you hear from town council, you don't know if you are a party to that with the current decision.
Good. Go ahead. Just, just to bring us up to speed on this.
My name is Gregory Sancho, I'm from St. Paul, I represent Aggregate. And you apologized to actually pull the time in this proceeding.
Could you speak louder?
The whole point that Aggregate filed the motion was, we just wanted to continue this process for a couple of weeks to get a chance to look at it. We didn't see the draft decision until Tuesday. We saw some statements that were put in there by the applicant that we disagree with, particularly concerning the abandonment of conforming use, which is contradictory to the zoning bylaw, as well as the whole reason why this application is needed. The special permit is needed. We think it should be granted, but the truth is, it's needed because they built a garage addition in 2002, at which point they own over 50,000 square feet. It has absolutely nothing to do with making concrete. Aggregate would like the rights to this lease back and they'll continue to build concrete when the market's right for them to produce concrete, but it's a conforming use, you can abandon conforming use. So the way the draft was written, it suggests that there has any relationship, you know, the abandonment provision is inconsistent with the use that's allowed on the site. So it's the way it's presented, and our concern is that the applicant would use that in arbitration to support their position against us. All we asked for in the motion, and we tried to keep it with the arbitrator specifically to not get the town involved, is we wanted it to be held off until the arbitration award. Two weeks will be done with our testimony in two weeks. You know, that's all we were looking for. And they opposed the, the motion. I politely asked if they would continue on their own, you know, voluntarily continue the meeting for two weeks, and they wouldn't. They want the permit written the way they drafted it so that it says the things they want to say. And that was our concern. So again, I apologize to pull the time. It is a private dispute, but that's Aggregate's position and we just have to represent that before the board.
Hey, so just, just to understand your position, Maron, you're objecting to us granting, to the granting of a special permit on what grounds? That it's not abandoned?
I'm, I'm objecting to the suggestion that the reason why a special permit is needed is to resume concrete. The special permit is needed because they exceeded the size of the 50,000 square feet 12 years ago.
The draft findings.
Yeah, and that's, that's my.
And that, that's your contention?
That's my.
The draft findings you don't like.
I mean, despite the proposal in 2002 made that clear, the 46,000 square feet before, they added 8,000 square feet, they went over.
But, but that's really not the reason that they're here. That was out of 2002. It's been going on, it's been going on for 11 years. We didn't drag them in here to, to make them put a special permit on the property because that building is now bigger.
I, I, I agree, you know, there is, it's gone by, but the truth is, they need the special permit, but again, I don't.
They're not, they're not coming in and, and I guess shame of both these, they're not coming in there because they've seen the area in their ways and all of a sudden they want to put a special permit because, oh wow, we put that building up and now we're too big, now we want to do it after the fact. The special permit really has to do with the fact that they're coming in because that building was abandoned, because the concrete plant. So it's up to us to decide whether or not we want a special permit for the concrete, not the, the 8,000 square feet has, as far as I'm concerned, has nothing to do with whether or not you need a special permit. That should have been decided in 2002, not now. It's a game you guys are playing against each other to try to, to, to fortify your positions on why you guys stopped making concrete. Can I ask you a question? Did you still pay the rent?
There was, there's a number of problems with the way the whole transaction worked in there. There was.
So this is, this is not about the 8,000 square feet. That was done, they're not coming in with their tail between their legs saying, oops, we made the building too big, now we want to put a special permit, because they're not selling it. It's off for sale, so there's no sale triggering this. This is about whether or not they can make concrete. And my theory is, the plant is exactly where it was, it's being proposed, exactly where it was before. The only thing, they're going to have to bring it up to DEP standards because of the way they, you know, you drain the water out there. And obviously, DEP, I would assume, is probably going to be the determining factor as to what improvements need to be done. It's a question of whether a 50-year-old concrete bashing plant, whether it's been abandoned for a week or whether it's been, been abandoned for eight, five years, needs a new special permit. It's not about the 8,000 square feet.
Yeah, but I, I think, even though this is an arbitration about between the two of you and may not involve us directly, I think it's prudent to wait for town council to weigh in. And I, I, I see no problem with the way we've dealt with this, but I think if there's legal issue, it's a prudent thing to.
No, no, I've changed my mind because this is not about the 8,000 square feet.
Right, but regardless of what's about, regardless.
I think we should make a decision on whether or not that needs a special permit for the continuation of bashing plant. You want to wait?
But why would we want to do it this evening?
You want to wait?
I think we're fine to go ahead because this is, this is not.
Do you want to wait? You want to wait? He wants to.
You need four votes. And I think if this is happening, we should hear from town council.
Okay, but I think we should send it to town council. They're, they're, I think the, this fact that they're before us for a special permit, I guess I was a little vague as to why. I thought it was always about the bashing plant. If they're before us because of the 8,000 square feet that's, that's on that other building, that's not the reason they're here. And I. Town council, I don't comment.
You didn't ask him for it?
We didn't ask for it. This is about whether the, so we need to talk to town council.
Right, this may be a separate issue with them, but regardless, I think the prudent thing for the town is to wait.
We're to both of those issues.
And I do feel you've been dealing with us in good faith, so.
In our decision, we're looking at both of those issues because, because trigger, they do trigger the 50,000 square feet, which is, even though they don't, they're not selling the place, it's the, it's probably time to revisit a special permit that was never granted for that size space.
It's, it's, it's after the fact, it's 12 years after the fact. If they're going to sell it, then that, that's the time to do it. They're not selling it.
There's, there's two issues here. There's the square footage and there's the old bashing plant.
And the old bashing plant. That's, that's really what the issue is, whether or not the old bashing plant, as it sits right now, could be started up tomorrow, they threw a little lime, a little sand, a little water, whatever magic else they put in there, if they could make concrete tomorrow. And all I'm saying is if they get a, get away from what? From town council? You need four votes.
Right, you need four votes in your favor, and I'm saying.
Right now, you got three.
I understand this may be a private matter, it may be for compensation, who knows? It may not involve us.
But what would town council add to this?
Or take away from this?
All I think, town, town.
That's a very good question.
Yes, and we don't know that, and I'm saying, let's be prudent.
Okay, I don't have a problem with waiting.
Yeah, at least it puts you in a more solid position if it's waited and we feel comfortable moving ahead as opposed to doing something now and then.
I have no problem with waiting.
Issues unresolved. I, I like the draft statement that I see before me. I'm not ready to vote on it.
Most respectfully, and I understand, most respectfully, this is very, very unfair to the applicant.
I get that, but you don't have four votes. If you ask to vote now, you're not going to win.
Right, so I, I'm trying to, as best possible, help you move ahead. I think it's wise for the town to wait to get town council's input. They may say it's immaterial as to what's going on between the two of you and then we act.
So why don't we put it on for, right nearly on the 21st? We'll get, have answered by town council about, about both issues, whether or not the 8,000 square feet, it is the issue here. And, um, do you have an issue from, do you have an answer from the experts that you've talked about what needs to be done to open the, to start the plant?
Yes.
That would be helpful.
That would be helpful if you're willing to share with us. If you're not, I totally understand why.
We, we have multiple, but then everybody has multiple.
You know what's.
But, you know, I, I, I would tell you that our experts testified, one of our experts has testified, there are other experts who have all said that the economic and prudent thing to do is to replace the plant in its entirety. Aggregate disagrees, so the.
It sounds like a reasonable thing, but still, the prudent thing is to hear from our town council.
Okay.
It probably puts you in a better situation.
Unfortunately, I hate to do that, but you need four votes and I get the only you don't have right now, so. Why don't we put it, why don't we put it on for the 21st? Before I do, 7:30, these gentlemen, I want to come up for it.
Yeah, and, yeah, do we push forward, Mr. Sancho?
Yeah, so we'll get you on it on, thank you.
Maron, if we, if we do, can we have everybody that's mentioned in this letter from Aggregate respond? For instance, says, the town building inspector is, is mentioned here that he, that he had no issue with the non-conforming use. We want to hear from all those guys, anybody that's mentioned in this letter.
How about we wait and see what Chris?
Yeah, let's find out what town council. Yeah, why don't we? If we need to get anybody involved that's not a big deal.
Because Roland won't respond to just a verbal.
Okay, why don't we do that one? Thank you, and I apologize for us being late.
So 7:30 on.
It's unfortunate, it's a last minute, you know, five minutes to midnight type action. You get that, we understand that, you know, puts you in an awkward situation.
All right, we haven't even battled, we haven't, we have a 8:30.
We're ahead of time, what do you do?
I mean, that one was bad, where did this one start?
Okay, we have two new letters.
All that free time?
You know what? It isn't about the 8,000 square feet.
No, I understand, but.
We have a preliminary subdivision, the sale of the property. I think that's where most people look to stay, they'll look to, go up to that, after that, so.
And maybe see if they want some.
We're going to take some input, ask some questions by the board, some people that haven't been here before. And then if you want to ask a question, I'll acknowledge you. And you give Maron your name so we can put it on the report, so it goes into the minutes. Applause are yours. Oh, you can sign your name.
No, for the record, I'm Paul Alfano, I represent the Oak Hill Trust, who's the applicant for this. And as the chairman said, this is a preliminary meeting. Regardless of what happens here today, we'll have to come back and resubmit and start the hearing process all over again for a definitive plan. This is a situation where because of the location of the property, that we all felt that it would be worthwhile to invite the abutters at this stage, even though the process does not require notice of the abutters at this stage, we have submitted to the board a preliminary cluster subdivision plan based upon a preliminary conventional subdivision plan. And the purpose of this discussion is to bring the board up to date. We had an informal discussion with the board a month or so ago regarding the plan. In the meantime, Jeff Brem from Itra Brem Corporation has done some additional work. We've met with the department heads, we've talked to them about their concerns regarding the project, we've tweaked the project to address some of the concerns. There are still some, some concerns to be addressed, but we felt this was the appropriate time. Additionally, at the end of this process, whether it's tonight or another night, according to the bylaw, we need permission from the planning board to go forward with a, a cluster plan. And if not a cluster plan, then we would go forward with the conventional plan. But the board has to make a determination to give us a direction to go one way or another. So with that brief introduction, Jeff is first, I think, going to go through the basis for the numbers of lots that you can get on the property on a conventional plan and then show the, the cluster plan that we prefer to establish.
Before you start, do you have a, a new plan that the board can look at or is it the same one that's going to hand it out?
I think it's the same one, let me double check. We're afraid of open space development.
The open space, the same as conventional? I don't know, I'll just give it to you. This one's in color, so. No, I have this one in color.
Do you guys have a copy of the previous open space plan that was presented back in?
I do not, would you? I'm sorry. I maybe have somewhere my files.
If you have some extra, probably some of the audience would like to see it.
This is horrible.
Pass them around.
Maron, do you need a copy of those? Since you've been left out in the past.
Thank you.
New castles, retaining, board members coming, calling you up, fetching.
I saw it, yeah. This is the water we're supposed to.
That's the big, the largest one.
From the last one. It's the open space plant.
Anyway, why don't you, why don't you just start with?
Yeah, I'll come back to it. I have one that's close. Let me just see how exactly.
I think I have one.
You do? I have to go on to the last one. That is, that's it.
All right, okay.
It's going to look almost exactly the same, so. Want to look it up? I'll come back to this. Let me, that's, that's similar plan, so I'll go through that in a minute. If I could spend a few minutes, because the neighbors are here, about what the land looks like. You've already been, what it looks like in the field right now, and I'll go through what Paul said, the calculations, I'll explain the difference between the two plans. So to orient you, this is Oak Hill Road here in the north, comes down Sanderson Road here in the east, and Wickham Road, Wickham Ave. on the south. So it's bounded by three sides. This is George Sanderson's house, he lives here. These are the two lots that are being constructed right now, or this one's built, one's being sold, this one is being constructed now. These two have been recently cleared. Also, two lots were cut out some time ago, a few years ago, and they were built on right out front here. That orient you. The way the site is, I'll explain topographically, it rises up from Wickham Road and keeps rising kind of to a high point here. This drops off into this wetland, which it sometimes becomes a pond. On this side of the pond to the east is a big field, across the tree from the other big field, the Sanderson zone, you can see some farming being done. Behind this point is a giant escar, where you go up, not giant, but it's a good-sized escar, where you go up a very steep hill to a, to a ridge, and it goes back down. That is a sand, basically a sandbank. And then there's a wetland that kind of goes in this direction, flows into this pond here. This pond flows out through a dam that was built in this area that's crushed now, flows under Sanderson Road in another crushed pipe. On this side of the wetland, goes up again to a kind of a rolling area, this, this thing goes up and down, up, and then it rises up to Oak Hill Road. So that's the topography. The vegetation, it's all mixed hardwoods throughout, different type of trees, you can see pretty far, so the undergrowth isn't that heavy, which indicates the, clearly the soils are very sandy. You got the sandy soils in the escar course, but even on all the sites and everywhere we look, it's very sandy soils, deep to bedrock, I mean, deep to groundwater. Soils, vegetation, wetland, topography. So that's how the site exists. From the planning point of view, we have to draw up what would be allowed as a conventional, and then we're looking at doing a cluster plan. So this is the conventional layout. It's pretty simple. There's just a bunch of A and I lots on Oak Hill Road, a bunch of A and I lots on Sanderson. a bunch of A and R lots on Sanderson, A and R stands for approval not required, they're simple subdivision lots. You need to have road frontage and area, if you meet the requirements, they're sort of automatic. So these are very simple A and R lots, two of them are what they call hammerhead lots, lot three, lot seven. That's reducing the furniture, but doubling the area required. And then this one over here, number ten, is also hammerheads, these three hammerhead pork chop lots, if you can. You turn the corner, these are Sanderson Road, these are straightforward A and R lots. And then the, the balance of the project is this horseshoe proposed roadway with, with lots all on that. Lot count in total is, there are twelve conventional A and R lots, three hammerhead, or reduced furniture lots, fifteen lots, I'm sorry, thirteen lots on this horseshoe, for a total of thirty lots. Now, the planning board recently had, they have a zoning which allows you to do cluster, this is the cluster plan. The first thing is you can get, an applicant can get up to a hundred percent bonus on the A and R lots, if they don't build the A and R lots. So that, that works out, so that there's fifteen A and R lots in that plan. You could double that to thirty, add the thirteen that are in the horseshoe, that's a total of forty-three lots allowed maximum on, on the property. And so this plan here-
Wait, you said there was twelve, thirteen?
And three?
Twelve, three, and fifteen.
Twelve, three, and fifteen.
How does this break down?
I'm sorry, twelve-
Your count only comes to twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Right.
So you're right, fifteen A and R lots.
Right.
Thirteen conventional lots.
Okay.
Thank you. This is a plan that we brought to the, to the planning board back in July. This plan showed the forty, I think it's forty-two lots. But this one's a little bit complicated, because this includes the A and R lots that were cut out. And that's the first thing that the department head said to us, was, we're confused because you, you, you cut out lots and then you put them back in, and you're cutting them out, and this table was hard to read. So this one, as you see, A and R lot, E four, E three, E one, and E two are not on the next plan I'm gonna show you. So that's the first change, we took them out. What we were doing in this plan was we had them in, and then we took them out before we did the calculation of, of bonuses. The other major change that we did to this plan was we met with the department staff, and they didn't like this private driveway right here. This was intended to be like a private driveway, and for fire access and so forth, it wasn't preferred. So we made a change to this, the units look like, and they're in the same location, but you'll see in the next plan that this has changed a little bit. Same with this, some slight modifications to meet the fire department code. And the last major change is we put lot lines on this, the next plan. This plan is basically a, a kind of a common area, where you have a condo type of thing, detached condominium. The next plan would be individual lots, like everybody usually has. So those are the, the main changes. Now, I'm gonna go through the numbers with you again. The other two, other major change, I should say, is, there are two lots here. These are, you drive down to the base of the escar, and this, these two are in the hill of one of the escars. And they've been removed. One of the things that we started talking about with the department heads is, what do we need to, to do for soil testing? We all know that it's sandy soils, we all know it is deep to water, there's no doubt about that from anybody. The question though is, what is the requirement for the town versus what is the requirement for the state to do a cluster? How many of these lots do you have to actually go and soil test? Soil testing, this is a big deal, as you can imagine, you have to put six test holes on every lot. It's a lot of work for each of these lots, especially if you're not gonna be building septic systems on there. Giant waste of time and effort and money. The state has a law that says if you're doing a cluster plan, and fifty percent of your cluster is open space, and no more than fifty percent of that open space is wetlands, you don't have to test every lot. And we've been talking about that with Nishova. We were slightly under fifty percent in this plan. This showed about low forty, forty-two percent, forty-one percent open space. So by getting rid of these two lots, and making some adjustments, the new plan, so change number one, is this plan shows fifty percent of the total land is open space. And that's shown on one of the tables, right here, this open space table. Says forty-three acres, twenty-one and a half of it is open space, and less than fifty percent of that land is wetlands. It's all outlined on that table. The other change is, as you see, the lot lines and right-of-way lines. These areas here, I mentioned, we changed, so you see this is kind of a, this is a Y intersection. This is a Y intersection, and these lots all front, so we made these changes here. This looks pretty similar, and this looks pretty similar, we just added the right-of-ways and the lot lines to it. And area B also looks similar, we just changed the right-of-way lot lines. On area B, I moved the detention basin, and that's now got an infiltration system in the middle of the cul-de-sac. I also found an area here, if you remember our conversation, those were here. Imagine yourself not looking at it like a bird, but, in, in the air, but actually driving, and the, the concept of this plan is once you drive onto it from Wickham Road, that what you see is greenery, whether it be trees, or this big field in the middle, you would, you would see, you're looking this way now, and you would just see this greenery. And as you turn to the right, you'd still see greenery over here, so I had a bank of open space here. So it wasn't until you got, you know, quite a ways in, pretty much halfway into the subdivision, where you start seeing some houses. These are set back, you turn the corner, and then you start seeing these, and then you go out again. And that was part, an important part of the project. The second part of this road comes out here, and the big question was, what do we do with this strip of, of roadway? Do we go back out and create a loop, or do we do an emergency roadway, or do nothing at all? And that's still up in the air. But road B is very simple, it's a cul-de-sac road, there's nothing too exciting about it, other than it's in a gorgeous location of the site. There's a pretty, pretty field, and it overlooks the pond. Road C is a loop again with open space in the middle. And road D is just a small, kind of a Y turnaround. The septic systems for each of these would be in the open space. So road A, the septic system is in the middle of the open space, road B is in the middle of the field, and C and D is in this kind of flatter area off the road away. We've also met with Conservation Commission, and they are in the process of approving this wetland line. We, we met with them a week and a half ago here at Town Hall, and we met with them again this Sunday, and did a two and a half hour site walk, marked every single flag, and that'll be official wetlands soon, certainly within a month. So in summary, let me go through the numbers, so we all understand where we're at. So there's fifteen A and R lots, thirteen conventional subdivisions, like you said, that's twenty-eight. If you get the double bonus on the fifteen, fifteen plus fifteen is thirty, that's the most we can get, plus the thirteen, that's forty-three lots on this plan. We took out those two, they said, so we're only doing forty lots on the plan, we were one short always. So there's only forty lots being proposed, where we could get forty-three, and, and that's where we're at. And you're gonna, I know you got a letter from, from Littleton Electric Light and Water, that you're gonna read into the record. I just want to make sure that I didn't miss anything, yeah, there's a strip of land here on Oak Hill. Some of it's in the open space, open space D two, open space C three, and this strip of land here. The concept there is to have a fifty-foot no disturb zone, so that Oak Hill Road will look like it does right now. The only breaks in that are the two breaks for the roadways, otherwise it'll look similar to what it is now. This is a wide access here, it's kind of necessary, because there's decent amount of earthwork to get off of Wickham Road, onto the property. And the other access point, road B, is, is pretty easy, it's, it's straightforward, it comes right off the property. There's a small detention facility that's on one of the A and R lots, it'll be by easement. Otherwise, everything is on the site, we've shown some ideas of drainage, they're just concept ideas at this point. But we would meet the town's new stormwater bylaw. Back, I'm sure there's a lot-
I think there's, there's one more issue that came out from the meeting with the department heads, and I think the first person that raised it was the town administrator, that apparently there has been some difficulty in the part of the town getting the town to approve private sewer lines on public ways. The objective here is to have these roads accepted as public ways, but because there are shared septic systems, there's a point with most of the roads where the septic lines have to cross the right-of-way in order to get to the, the bleach field for each of the, the septic systems. So there was some concern expressed about whether the town meeting would accept as a public way a, a street with an existing sewer line in it. We thought that that issue was different than the way, different than the issue that had been presented to town meeting before, but it's something that we're gonna have to deal with, with the, with the conventional plan.
No, the cluster-
With the, with the, yeah, with the cluster plan, sorry.
Okay.
One more thing I want to add, I'm sorry, the purple line on this plan is just representative of an idea of some trails to connect, you know, you get the big property across the street, obviously, Oak Hill, and there's, there's a trail network that, that comes down there currently, right along this ridge line, I'm talking to Mr. Brown about moving some of these purple lines onto where there are already existing trails. He's done some work and presented me with some documents so that I could do that. But we would obviously use existing trails where we could, and then expand them so that you could take an existing trail and now walk back out to Wickham where you can right now, and so forth. So we would be working with Conservation and, and various people already in town to make sure that happens.
Okay, let's start with the conventional. You have no odd-shaped lot form that was on any of your lots or not?
Right.
You have three lots in there, ten, seven, and three, ten and seven will never make the odd-shaped lot form. Three is probably, it might make it, but you have no odd shapes, you have to put odd shapes on all of that. So that would probably bring you down to about twenty-six lots conventionally. So, you know, until, until such time as we can see all of that, I don't think we can go on the assumption that twenty-eight lots is what you're gonna get conventionally. Putting your open space plan up on. The bonus density, and not to be honest, I was never a big proponent of giving you a bonus for getting rid of the A and R lots. Intent of that was to take and leave the A and R lots in their natural state, and push the density into a cluster somewhere else. You've basically taken the A and R lots, clustered them all together, put a roadway in the middle, but still took all the A and R lot land. So there is no vistas really left, you put a septic system in the land that's left. The two clusters up in Oak Hill are not what I read, are not what a cluster zone is supposed to look like. It was supposed to be intense one way and left in its natural state, and that's not what it does. And to ask for a dense, a bonus on that, I think is stretching it, because that's not what that bylaw was implied. I mean, this is a preliminary, it's, you know, it's, it, that's not, that's not the way the open space was supposed to work. It's supposed to be, if you wanted to get rid of the A and Rs, you get rid of them, you leave them as open space, not take six lots and squeeze everything there and still use most of the, most of the A and R land. So that, that's my first look at, at this, it's, it's just too dense. You got forty lots, and something that normally only holds twenty-six, you're trying to, I keep saying, you're trying to fit a size twelve foot into a size eight shoe. Savis' letter is, talks about your nitrogen loading at the propping line, you're over that. His calculations that he did suggest that twenty-six lots is about all this parcel can hold. I did talk to you about trying to come back on an open space with less density than, than forty lots to, to still do the open space. I still think the open space is still the best way to go. But you're using every trick in the book, you're using the, the middle of the roadway to put your detention base, you put your septic in there. We've never done that before in an open space plan. You're counting open space in the middle of, of a cul-de-sac that nobody's gonna be able to get to, to try to get your densities down. You've got open space where you're putting septic on, we've never done that in this town before. We've never allowed open space that's gonna be usable by the residents of the town in Littleton to have septic systems on it.
Medium strips.
Yeah, you're using medium strips as, as open space, it's green space, it's not open space.
Mark, you weren't here the summer when-
I wasn't, yeah, and I apologize for not being here.
When this was proposed, and we, we had, we had also mentioned that this was too tight. It needed to have more, more, more pathways to, because this is, open space is not just for septic systems like Mark says. It's for, it's for wildlife, to continue to be able to, to move on the property at the same way they move right now. And, and right now, the way you've got this, it's, it's actually more, these are, these are dams, these are like wildlife would never walk through there. Or here, we, we asked to see if you could open it up more, and, and in whatever way you needed to do that. And obviously, it's by cutting back on some of those houses in order to do that. You, you actually provide more open space with that plan.
The conventional plan's a better plan. What do you mean, more open space with that?
More freedom for the wildlife to move around more green area for, for the town. This is, all this is doing is, is isolating the wetland, and given, and chopping down trees so you can put in-
And the escar too.
Put in septic systems and, and call that open space. If we could, I would prefer an open space plan, but I'd prefer an open space plan with a lot less density. Something where wildlife could still find their way through to the wetlands and back out again. Right now, they can't do that.
Yeah, open space in general is, is something that's usable, it's continuous, it's often, it has sort of bulk to it, it's connected. And a lot of what your county's open space are just remnants and fragments, for the way you shoehorned the houses in. Medium strips, buffers, roads, and places where there's a lot of infrastructure underneath, isn't usable, open space. The features to protect it here, one, which has been mentioned by Savis, is the aquifer, and there's too much nitrate loading, and that's caused by the houses, excess houses. Another is the escar, which is an important geological feature, and so the public has written in on, on that. And the third is sort of the continuous green space. You know, you do a cul-de-sac, the rotary is not accessible, open space, isn't good for humans, isn't good for wildlife. You know, the idea is, is connected, when people protect open spaces, because it has sort of a plan to it. The, and, and also, you know, just dumping all sorts of things such as detention ponds, septic systems underneath of it, yeah, does have impact that doesn't really meet the open space approach. I mean, people talk about viable open space, and it, it doesn't have that. I do prefer the open space plan in general, because the methodology allows a lot more to be done, allows clustering, which I think is good for you as well for building structures and things that are close together, it's also good for the public. And may also be helpful for trying to control some of the nitrate loading. There's a question about if you're, well, in, in particular, you look at the south side, Wickham Ave, where your first cul-de-sac, your lollipop there, there's no protected buffer up front the way it is on Oak Hill on the north side. You're piggybacking right on top of A and R lots, so it kills the whole intent of getting some bonus-
You're talking right here?
No, further down.
The two white spots, the two house lots, where you're coming in off the road, you, your lots, there's no protected buffer between the road and, and your houses.
These here?
No.
No, they, they ain't our lots, all the roadway that are there.
What do I, here?
These here.
Yes, you're piggybacking atop of those. Now, if you're building those, it sort of kills the whole concept of having the front, there's a scenic frontage and protected-
These are already built.
Right, so what, what's the purpose? How do you get any bonus out of that? You're putting it right-
Those are part of the bonus calculation.
These are not part of the bonus calc-
Those are not-
Okay, it's just continuous houses off the road, unlike, say, on the northern part of Oak Hill, where you do have a permanent protected buffer, which is that dark brown line, which I guess is with the fifty-foot buffer you talk about.
Right.
So I mean, at least get some there. Go on Sanderson Road on the east side, you're almost smack on top of the road, there isn't much of a buffer there. Fact is, question whether that whole loop should be removed. You know, that, that might help with your nitrite calculations. Yeah.
Jared, do you have anything that I want to open up to the public? No, that's like fifty things in one.
What?
Anybody in the audience have anything? Name please for Maren?
Bill Brown, I'm the abutter on the southwest side.
Bill Brown, I'm the voter on the southwest side, the esker there, and I'm I'm on the Littleton Conservation Trust trustee, and I'm the steward of, land steward of Oak Hill. So the entrance is right across from the spur on the northwest, northeast corner of that. I just said that based on that fact, you shouldn't be surprised that I favor an open space plan, maybe not this one, maybe it's too dense, but some sort of open space plan that preserves the esker. I think that's the only esker in town, nowhere. But I real, the two points I want to address is Savis' letter. It just came the other night. On the nitrate loading analysis, where he comes up with eight point six plus the existing point seven four that's the baseline, you're above nine, and they're trying to stay below five to protect the well system. What I'd recommend that the board ask Savis to do is have the board of the department run that analysis for the conventional yield plan. Because I'm I'm not a sanitary engineer, but I am an engineer. And using his spreadsheet and his calculations for lots and acres, even though there's ten less lots on the conventional plan, they're much bigger lots and presumably more long.
I have.
Why those lots are in the open space?
I have to do it, by the way.
So I think that number will come above five also.
It's six, it still comes out at six point.
Well, six plus point seven four existing brings it to seven.
But that's that's six at twenty-six.
Yeah, that's twenty-six lots.
Six at twenty-six lots, and you're at six point seven at thirty.
So, all right. And then the second thing was, he said that in in the, you have a aquifer zoning overlay district requirement of six gallon to a thousand will be exceeded with the open space development. And it may still be exceeded even if you reduce the number of lots. But maybe get around that. I don't know what his, you know, his methodology is when he runs that spreadsheet. It must be some, it must be some accepted, you know, unit, some kind of formula he's using. But maybe there's a more advanced technique for the septic system treatment. You know, maybe new methods from when that methodology was developed. You put some exist, a better common cluster septic system, and you reduce the nitrate flow into the ground, which reduces the nitrate loading and therefore allow, you know, ameliorate the the number of lots you could get and still meet the the nitrate loading.
Thank you. Tess?
Rick Finley, Speaker Rock, I'm also on the Conservation Trust. And I would have to agree that I like the clustered plan. In any way we could perhaps get back to the drawing board, work with Savis and come up with the numbers that would help our, protect our water and also allow the cluster plan. Does a suggestion if we were using the the number of lots, we might, you know, use your plan, but just remove the two, the two houses in each group that are closest to the road, thereby increasing your buffer. That might be one way of approaching.
Tess in the back.
Hi, the Pogasic Water Commissioner. I'd I'd like to see the app, and I'm in front of our board. Okay, we were never contacted, so we'd love to see that. Very concerned about the nitrate.
And Savis unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. Savis has been the, the open space really started with Savis and those of us who were on that line ago. To to, because the water is so sensitive in the town of Littleton, Savis has been on the forefront with it forever, and he apologizes for not being here. But we could probably set up a meeting. You have Savis there, he definitely will be here at the next meeting. Hopefully, we could have some dialogue with, which we just started before that.
But especially because it's the primary recharge for the for the Wickham well field, which is, I think, closer to the surface of the.
It sounds, I mean, it sounds like you might want to get some of these lots away from the low areas.
The low areas.
The low area, well.
Well, Savis is studying, just so you know, he didn't do a perimeter study. He just did a loading study.
Right.
He didn't look at any particular spot. He just said, what is the load? Basically, how much nitrogen in pounds are you gonna put it on here?
Yeah.
And then he turned it into how much water is landing on the site and therefore figure out how much pound per per liter.
But it's a plan that's all sand and gravel, that's right, the immediate recharge for the Wickham wells.
Anyone else in the back? Anyone else?
We also got a letter.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Finn McSweeney. I live on Wickham Avenue and the house on the east side of what I think is being proposed as like an emergency exit here. I'm wondering, one thing I'm wondering is why there's a consideration on Oak Hill for this fifty-foot buffer existing? And it looks like sort of a smaller buffer existing on Sanderson Road with the pre-existing lots. Doesn't seem to be any consideration for buffering those from the new development, either if it's a house sort of to our north or the road itself to the east. There doesn't seem to be a lot of consideration that's being given to a pre-existing developments.
You mean like your your backyard?
Yeah.
Or side, or side yard.
Or anyone.
Or or anyone's, the the other.
Yeah, but I mean, so I mean, if you look at Savis' letter, I mean, with the numbers, it looks like you're, you're coming between twenty-six and thirty lots seems to be the.
Well, that's what we get with the conventional, twenty-six, thirty.
Have you, correct?
Right.
But that, but but the other consideration is the overall environmental impact, right? I mean, that's, we can consider that as part of the open space.
Can, when I spoke with you, I I talked about taking the the cul-de-sac off of Wickham, no, Sanderson.
Yes.
All right, taking that whole thing out. That brings you down to what?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Is that, I know you were gonna talk to your client about it. Is it something that's, they would be interested in?
It's something to talk about, but I don't know if it solves some of the problems that we've already mentioned. If, can I go back a little bit? The, you talk about the A and Rs that you want here, that you want, the the concept is to take A and Rs and move them back. But in both, I mean, just look where I am. This is the esker. This is the wetland. And it doesn't take much. If I'm gonna take the lots from here and move them back, I'm putting them into the esker. That's not gonna work. If I take the lots here and move them back and put them into the pond, that's not gonna work either. So this property doesn't allow for that quote concept of taking.
But you should, you could, you could, if you, if you get down to twenty-six, thirty lots, you you could take some of the lots out of the large cluster, what is that, A?
Twenty-one lots, yeah, yeah.
You could take some of the lots out of A and reload them to B, to D.
No, D, I can't fit any more in here.
No, no.
What do you mean?
In other words, if you kept the, what did you put, five here? If you get down to twenty-six, thirty, you take some out of A.
Yeah.
And you keep the ones you have in D.
No, you, you, you take that whole little cluster.
No other way to do it.
No, you take, loses B.
Talking about getting rid of P all the way.
That's what I'm saying. If you lose B, then you keep D and you reduce A.
So you're down to thirty-four. So the question becomes, really, do we want a twenty-six subdivision, conventional subdivision? Or do we want it to thirty-four, maybe a little less open space?
Ultimately, that's the question.
That's the question.
That's a question.
I would rather see.
If you drive in the numbers based off of Savis' input.
I would rather see the thirty-four without that little cul-de-sac.
Without B.
Without B as an open space plan rather than the twenty-six as a conventional and try to give us a little more buffering and screening, which still gives us the, we'll still have the question about whether we want shared driveway, uh, shared systems in the middle of our cul-de-sac, which we can take that up another time. But I think thirty-four is a lot more desirable than the twenty-six the way it is or the forty it is as you've got proposed. That's.
You know, I don't, and and even the thirty-four, Mike, Mark might be pushing it because you, you've got to, you've got to open this up a bit. You've got to open that up.
Okay, you hit it with the other hand. I got, I got six.
But it sounds like we're almost in consensus, the open space.
That's what I'm saying.
It's the density that.
If he loses this, he he reduces this and he keeps this, that opens that up.
Yeah, provided he gets out a couple of houses here, a couple.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, so we're not.
So, for a tez, I would kind of, just to reiterate something that Finn mentioned. You know, I guess, you know, as far as buffering behind us, I think it could serve, you know, you know, water. We would obviously look like that because then we wouldn't have neighbors immediately behind us. But just to get back to the wildlife point, where Road A is, it's a routine migrate, migratory pattern for deer. They go up and down during the morning and then the evening, just trying to get to the water on the other side of Wickham Ave. And, excuse me, I feel like this design, the way you had it, would just completely, you know, remove that point. And it goes back to the point that you're damming the wildlife and kind of blocking them.
That's right. That's right.
Oh, wait, man. I mean, I have a three hundred and fifty pound bear walking down my side yard every day, so it doesn't see the body.
Place for you. But Pico removed it makes it.
That was the intent of keeping this middle corridor here. This strip exists. I can't make it bigger unless you guys want to donate land. And this is all I got. I can't make that bigger.
No, but I think.
But I didn't put any houses there either.
I think the point is, though, when you made the open space, you know, like you obviously put an element to, you know, augment or enlarge your open space calculations.
This here? No, I didn't. This isn't even included in the open space.
It's labeled open space on the plan that we received.
Not counted, so that's not why. I did it because of aesthetics and to let wildlife go through it.
I mean, I almost feel like a single road would be a better strategy, right, where you could have more, you know, perhaps open land on the side versus. And I think I also feel like just one of the comments, we recently moved to Littleton, and the reason why we did was, you know, Littleton in general has a kind of a rural feeling to it, more of a, especially in that area. And subdivision like this could totally change the dynamic and the feel of the neighborhood, which, you know, I think a more, you know, less houses, more spread out, that still maintaining open space would be a better feel.
Yes, sir, name please.
Scott Max. I live at Wickham, actually on the opposite side of the street. But I have just a question about the the N H E S P note in the plan. Just because on the opposite side of the street, there is a, there is a special, excuse me, it is designated as a priority habitat. So in terms of the fragmentation of this plot, to to the point that you brought up, Richard, I mean, that's another concern as well. And I can see there is a, there's a throughway there to the wetland, and I'm not sure, I'm I cannot expert on on the migratory patterns of of, you know, amphibians and things. But, you know, there are a lot of turtles that we see, you know, crushed in the street, you're trying to cross the street. Obviously, there are deer that cross the street as well. And I know that I believe the the designation on the opposite side of the street has to do more with amphibians. But to that point, you know, the less fragmentation, the better from a citizen's point of view.
Yeah, the wildlife, definitely, this this does not allow for, it doesn't even consider wildlife.
You need corridors connectivity.
Yeah, you need.
This is what I'm saying. It's a corridor. You're saying it's not a corridor.
This.
It's a corridor.
I don't know how I could create a corridor here that's wider than the land that I already own. Not I own, it's the same.
Once, once you get into that, once you get into that space, it's all houses. It's just a cluster of houses.
These are all houses already.
I understand that, but.
No, there's two A and R lots still over there.
These two bills, yeah.
The other ones.
Oh, way over here, yeah. One here and one here.
You still have two A and R lots there. You're taking out of the equation.
They just want one road, put it to one side, leave the other side for you.
In a natural state.
Yeah, on the slot. That's your path.
Put the road right there.
And then that's for you.
They go where? They go to somebody's yard? What are they gonna deliver the newspaper when they get in there?
That's all you own.
No, he hasn't. He's got all of this. He still owns this and he owns that over there.
Is he building that?
Those are two A and R lots that they still own.
But that's not part of this plan.
It's still part of the ownership of this. They have chosen, they have chosen not to put part of this, the part of this preliminary is to give them feedback.
So you want them to throw those in there as open space?
Yeah, like to see what it would look like if we got rid of those A and R lots too and try to figure out.
So why didn't you just say that?
I just did, thank you.
So it's free along Sanderson Road.
So it's free along Sanderson. Oh, that's my point exactly. The whole intent of this open space bylaw is to preserve the open space and preserving as much as you can on Sanderson is probably, you don't have, you can't preserve all the roads. So if you preserve as much as you can on Sanderson, put some of them up on Oak Hill, maybe we try to deal with it that way, but so loses it.
It deals with a, it connects it across the street, which is also an aquifer area.
But the, but but we're not preserving open space just for the, just for the sheer fact of you're preserving open space. You're preserving it for a reason.
Got it, got it. Got it. To block it, pass it recreation for animals.
People.
And we're doing all that here.
It looks like.
This is, maybe you weren't missing, this is a gigantic swath right through here.
I know. Well, which way is animal's going? Go left and right and.
It's not just about the animal. It's just the whole idea of the the roadway too. You know, if you, I think you're just too dense. I think you've heard that from everybody here. Now it's coming up with a number that kind of makes sense and what that property can support. And rather than being a dead deer anywhere that we already have, why don't we see what we can come up with more than welcome to meet with you.
Let's let's lay all the cards on the table. There's an economic factor too. This is twenty-seven hundred feet of road here. Road costs four or five hundred dollars a foot. Every time you build a foot of road, it's a lot of money. Two feet is a thousand dollars. It adds up really quick. It's only eighteen hundred feet of road here, so you have to compare, we're normally in a cluster. This is a backwards plan, just so that all the cards on the table. Normally in a cluster, you build a road that's two thousand feet conventionally. You get a reduction in lot frontages, lot areas, and you end up building a thousand-foot road. Everybody wins. The town wins, the developer has to build less roadway and so forth. This is the opposite of that. We have more roadway on the cluster plan than there is in the conventional plan. It's backwards. I mean, no, I've never had that before. So the economics pushes the number of lots to a certain extent because you have to build all this roadway. So that's where the economics comes in. Would you do twenty-six lot with the same amount of roadway here? It doesn't make sense. Then twenty-six lots with a much less amount of roadway.
You got a septic concern too.
Septic's cheaper on this one. It's more expensive here.
You're doing shared systems on that.
More expensive for shared systems. So you get all these economics that are going the wrong way, and then you start cutting down the lots, trying to provide, it's that, it's, there's only so much that you can fit into the pot, and and that's where the pot becomes all full.
All right, so let's let's talk about the money. So you're gonna put in four shared systems, right? These are all gonna have to be condos. They're gonna have to share the property.
Homeowners association.
No condo.
Well, who's gonna, who's gonna pay for the system?
There's a, you'll be a homeowners association associated with those houses that are served by each individual system.
Cost to the homeowner.
Cost to the homeowner.
Who's gonna, who's gonna own the road?
The goal is to have it as a public way, have it an accepted public way. Build it to town standards so the town meeting would accept them when they're done.
With a sewer line running through it.
And that's one of the problems.
And you know that we already.
But if that's impossible, if that's impossible, that also pushes us to the conventional plan, no question.
That is a big deal because.
It's a big deal.
It is a big deal.
There's no other way of doing this other than shared systems, and to do a shared system, you have to convey the sewage in pipes, and the pipes have to cross the road.
So this may not work anyways.
Well, it 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 depends because it isn't a law. You can't have it easily.
And it's not a problem.
No, I understand that. You just gotta go in front of the town and say, hey, you boarded it down for the other side of town. Are you gonna board it in for this?
But this is, we think this is a different situation than was present there and would need the support of the planning board to say that, you know.
This makes sense.
This makes sense.
That to.
But but to to get to that point, you gotta, you gotta be looking at your nitrate, nitrate levels. Because if you have, if you're gonna cross the road, you're gonna put a shared system, and you're still overloading the the groundwater with nitrates, so lose, lose.
Capisce. I understood. We were, we were discussing that one particular issue at that moment. Yeah.
So then why don't we take a step back, see what we can do open space wise with a number that both sides can live with. And like I said, I'm willing to be with you informally if you'd like, if you like, keep it public and do it here or come up with another plan, send it back to Martin and let us all take a look at that. That's fine. Get Savis involved.
Yeah, Savis has got to get involved, absolutely.
I mean, I think we all agree that if we can make the open space work, we'd like to see that. It's just the the density of it.
But, okay, agreed. Know that some of the concepts that you have in mind, which are good concepts on the open space, which is to take the stuff in the front and move it in the back, I have no back to move it to. So we all have to realize that if we're gonna go open space, I can't, I'm not gonna put it in the esker. That's crazy, and I can't put it in the wetland. So I can only go back so far, which bumps up against some of the neighbors because, you know, I'm squeezed.
No, but I think if you play with your density, you can give some of the neighbors some relief. If you pull a couple of lots out of there, you give the neighbors some relief.
So what's, what's your priority, though? I mean, we've talked about the potential of, you know, removing this in order to remove a bunch of lots. Well, that doesn't do a hell of a lot for the neighbors.
Right.
If we make the priority trying to create a greater buffer from the neighbors, then that's, that, that's not gonna go away.
No, I'm saying if you, right now, if you go based on Savis' letter, right, for nitrogen loading, the number gets you down to like twenty-six, thirty lots. If you get down to thirty lots and you give somewhere, then you can reduce the impact of the neighbors there, but open up some space. If you get down to thirty lots, and you give somewhere, then you can reduce the impact of the neighbors there, you open up some space.
How about if you do this, how about if you take, rather, leave the, leave the cul-de-sac, leave my, my six houses that I'd already seen go away, leave those there. And take them back out on the little arm that you've got coming off the, which are behind the neighbors.
Which is what's, yeah, that's where.
Take the six houses out of there then.
But, you know.
Maybe eight houses.
Mark, if they, you know, maybe, maybe reduce the density here, reduce the density here, and reduce the density here, and see what you come up with.
Well, the other thing is, I mean.
You know, that doesn't work.
That's wrong.
That's right, this, this actually makes sense, if you asked us to do this and said, we can get behind this plan and take that out, we can do that because.
You don't have to build the road.
We don't have to build the road, but if we have to build the same infrastructure and lose the lots.
So the take.
This is the plan.
Take less road, take, take that little arm off, take less, less of those out.
Is this your arm?
Yeah, take my arm off.
This is your arm.
That way you'll get a better buffer back there, you don't have to worry about your second means of egress also. You give the neighbors a greener backyard so that they're not looking right at it, and maybe we get it down to thirty?
Yeah, I, I think you have to figure out the nitrate level, what the capacity is, what we held, figure out with Savvas, and then deal with some open space people that sort of can figure out the, the configuration of it. And I agree, I mean, more roads, more cost, you know, clustering usually saves you money on that.
Right.
Because everything's closer together, and maybe sort of figure out a little bit of the infrastructure where the cluster, septic systems go and stuff. But, you know, you look at what you, traditionally, when you have a plan like this, you know, what you try to do is figure out what you're going to save, and then figure out where the houses are.
Right, that's exactly what we do.
Where the roads are, then the fourth thing is the property lines, that's the, the suggested way to protect a natural habitat like this. But one of the things you have that's very important here is, is the aquifer, you have to, I think, look at that first and figure out what's the carrying capacity, what's the limit on nitrates? Primarily from, from houses, and secondarily from, from lawns.
The, let me ask you about the esker, because I'm not an esker, esker is just a big mound of sand, right?
It's a big bunch of sand, very steep.
It, it, it's gravel, it's left by the glacier, it's a glacier feature, it's a, it's here, an important thing to save, it's a back row of runs.
This whole thing was gravelled, and then these are rivers that formed on each side of it that took the material away, leaving an esker, and for some reason, and that's why it's very steep.
Would an esker be a great place for a septic system?
No, no.
Too steep?
As far as the sand goes, yes.
It's something that's here important to save, I mean, there's actually a geologist that's.
Yeah, but if you put the, took the top off, put the septic system.
I think you'd have some argument that way, we all want to save the esker.
Gravel has fast flow in it, you don't want to do that.
You know, this is a perfect candidate for us, for a small sewer system.
Not when you have an aquifer, our need.
A small sewer system.
I don't think so.
Anyway, why don't we look at it that way, because we're all just going back, same thing, look at either one of those, whichever makes the most, I think, after hearing the residents and everything, it makes more sense to take the houses out of their backyard, I'll lay it on.
Just as a, from my understanding, are we talking about if we, if we remove the backyard houses, are we then trading that for a full street through the side yard or no? In the, in the conventional?
In here?
Yes.
If you go conventional?
If we're talking, is the trade-off, is the trade-off between having this sort of entry and exit?
You got it.
Isn't it?
No, that's if you want.
The other thing I, I will, I throw on the table, because, because I'll throw it on the table, there's some kind of myriad between the two of these. That, you know, we're all looking at one big and then one big, but maybe it's, then we break it up into parts and do some kind of myriad, and I'll look at that as well, I'm not too hopeful, but.
Well, that's why you're throwing in the A and R lots that are right there, thinking that might give you more flexibility.
You've taken the A and R lots out of this, crazy, I want you to sell it, but it's really still part of this.
And you have some wetland going in there anyway.
It's just, it's actually a dug ditch that they, we think the farmers did, it would, conservation people think that this probably was some old cranberry bog. And they dug this ditch with oxen shovels, this is very steep, and it's just an outlet for the cranberry bog.
If Jeff has to draw new lines, is there any consensus on how that access road should look? Should it be a single strip of pavement off to one side so the private pound bear can get down there? Or is it going to be the, the double-barreled roadway that Jeff proposed?
Well, that's one, that's one option. I mean, the other option is the, the A and R lots that Mark makes up front.
Or, or move it entirely, well, you can't get there from here.
You got to get in there somehow. No, the double bar, I'm going to check with our botanist and the wildlife people, because they may say that having a double, I mean, I, everybody's seen deer on roadways, on edge of roadways, crossing roadways. Deer don't seem to be all that upset with roadways, you know, unless they get hit, but this may be better for the larger mammals. Maybe better for the, certainly better for the salamanders because they have a place to go and so forth, so I'll check with the.
It's not a priority concern of mine.
All right.
So.
But make the.
If I'm going to ask, go ahead.
Ray Johnson, twenty-six Oak Hill Road, my question is with regard to the difference between the conventional yield plan and this proposed here. Looks like this egress or driveway is, I can't tell if that's not drawn to scale, but it's very, very different from the loop road that you've drawn in on the conventional plan. Is this intended to be very narrow, and if so, can the same, can that be narrow down there?
Okay, this, this is a regular subdivision road, standards by the town, what's it, twenty?
Twenty-two. Twenty-two wide. Not to build that part of the road.
This is just that one lane, nine-foot-wide emergency roadway, like a driveway. So that if the fire department were somehow blocked here, they would use this, we've talked to the fire department, they said they're never going to use it. So the big question is, is planning board going to require something that nobody wants? So we're thinking of getting rid of this altogether as part of the plan, that's why it's purposely shown narrower, because it's not intended to be a road, more like a driveway.
Maybe it can be gravel.
And it's very steep, and so to make it a roadway, you have to cut into the banks, and it'd be, it's pretty sizable difference from what's there now. We were trying to kind of cut in a little nine or ten-foot.
See, that was our next bargaining chip, once we got them down to about thirty, then we could get them a little lower than we said the road goes, but you took it away from me, thank you.
That's about, that's about fifteen feet from the houses on either side, and I don't know, I don't know if maybe you know, is the hall, is the house on ninety-five, has that been sold? Because it was put up for sale, that's the house to the west side of, nope, the next house to the west side of the access road.
It's ninety-three.
Oh, is it ninety-three, I'm sorry, it's this, it's, sorry, it's ninety-three right here.
Is it still for sale?
Not part of this project.
No, lots, I mean, I don't.
Jimmy, you have, you got a question?
I think it's eighty-nine is for sale.
No, it's not.
Mick Tom, Mick Tom?
No, it's not anybody we know, we don't know.
I know, it's for sale, it's ninety-three.
You've got a home owner.
It's for sale.
The open space would first be protected by a conservation restriction enforceable by the town and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It'd be held by the same, by the homeowners association that, which is a collective of all of the lot owners, unless it was conveyed to a trust or to the town or some other entity if they wanted to do that. But absent a request for someone to take ownership of it, it would be owned by a trust that would be comprised of all the lot owners and protected in perpetuity by a conservation restriction.
We usually like the town, but we're open to.
Although the second thing you mentioned is usually biased against it not being as workable, as opposed to some public interest entity owning it, either a land trust in which there are a couple, or, or the town, such as the conservation.
We have no problem conveying it to one of those entities, it's actually a little less work for me to convey it out than to, to put it into the trust.
Yeah, it's a little more workable too, I mean, yeah, I know Mass Albon stays away from things that homeowners have, just because, you know, for example, Fifteen Great Road, they refuse to deal with what, what was there just because it's too problematic.
Jimmy, one, follow up.
If it's put into conservation, then if you have to repair the septic system, how does that work, is it easy?
Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
And then Sanderson Road has no electric lines on it currently, so if you go to send utilities down there, you're going to do some pretty good damage to the large trees that are existing because it's a pretty narrow road. So that's a consideration.
Additional cost.
Utilities.
Sanderson, yeah.
I'm going to say, I don't know if that's a scenic road, it probably is.
Yeah.
And it's done some significant growth on it, and to do it correctly, you're going to be taking quite a bit of cash, because there's, there's no utilities on that, you know, or electric.
What if it's a water cost?
There's water and gas.
That's a huge cost.
There's pole stuff right there.
As you get closer into it, the no-cut zone, you try to have a no-cut zone in another area, and then it comes back to haunt you all the time. Who's responsible for it, when you need to take trees down, who do they go, that should be all spelled out, because it just becomes a nightmare for when there's problem trees there. We also noticed that the, the AT&amp;T line goes through there, and how does that work to, if it goes through where the town accepts the road? Then we have an additional placement, you know, on a road, I know they're on the road now, but those were existing roads that they have. And I personally don't like the sewer line, and that, that's an issue for me.
We've got a few more things to iron up before we get. Don't worry about that, one last question, probably.
Yeah, I'm just reacting to some of the comments earlier, we were talking about maybe moving some of the houses up towards, on the Oak Hill Road, little subdivisions off of there. And I want to point out that Oak Hill Road is not a big road, Sanderson Road is even smaller. And so by putting these, these divisions in here and putting more, more load on that road, well, one, we need to make sure that, well, you guys need to make sure that you're not putting driveways on the berm of a hill or a blind spot or something like that. I see that happening on Lot Three A on Oak Hill Road.
Yeah.
But we're going, we, we need to really make sure that whatever we put in here is, is not going to be more like that.
Site distance as far as before, once we find out where the roads are going, before we close it anyway, it's going to have to do site distances either way.
I mean, I think the conventional probably does a slightly better job, but still, that has a big issue there about site distances, et cetera.
Yeah, a lot of stars by safety.
On that, you don't see this because it's here, but these, there are three points that are located by me being, going out there looking at the best places for site distance, and this plan shows three common driveways at those three places.
Did you cite Three A?
Uh, I think I did, yep. That one, there was one lot in the first four that would be.
All right, well, when do we want to continue this to the twenty-first, are you, is that good for you, or do you want to, or do you want more time?
We're good. I have one just super quick, it'll be of interest to everyone.
Okay.
What, in, in whatever form this ends up taking, is this, from start to finish, how long is construction? Is this, obviously, you can't give a very accurate estimate, is this eight months, is this three years?
The permitting is, I want to stick, might not go to you.
A year.
They're about a part of a year, and then the, you know, goes to construction, and, you know, is it going to take two years to build up, certainly?
Not, not just permitting, but once you actually start taking, for example, that was in.
Well, it's not going to happen overnight, I don't think anyone's going to be, there's, nobody has the intestinal fortitude to take this whole project on by themselves. So it might be done in phases where each pocket is done at a separate time by a separate builder, so it depends upon the market, it's not going to happen all at once.
Are those all going to be separate associations?
Yes.
There'll be four associations.
Or three.
Or three.
So you could, you could start the project and just leave it on the face pending, unmarked uptake or something?
One last change.
I was going to say, well, that brings up a good point of, I know we have another open space development that, because they haven't done a full buildout, we don't have the use of the open space yet.
Quite funny.
That's not been conveyed to the town, if you're going to build this over four or five years, at what point does it become open space?
Well, that would be part of my decision, would be part of my decision. Mark, what time on the twenty-first? Eight o'clock, good for everybody?
Eight o'clock.
All right, eight o'clock, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, you know what, that's a good point, you know the letter you're sending to Roddy, just about that, look.
Yeah, you did such a good job of.
Mark, you said something specific to Lot Ten.
Actually, from the conforming, you said no way.
Doesn't make it touch.
Conservation trust, I don't know what.
There has to be, there's an archetypal, we have to take the area, times the perimeter. Four, four or higher. There's no way that's. Seven probably goes out, maybe.
I guess.
So that, so it doesn't have to be.
Took a while though. He used to, it's what I do, it's what I do. You come in, you're forty, you're so old, but thirty, you're good.
Right away or something. You never heard of it.
Good, let's work, happy to be on any, let's work.
Thank you.
Thank you, let's work.
What?
Going on?
Yeah. The fish ledger, Mass Albon.
Oh, yeah.
This will be. Talk, it's all about open space.